Let's see here. Planning Zone. As a courtesy, everyone tonight, of course, please have your cellphones turned off as in any public event. The two planning commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural areas surrounding the city. This area is displayed upon the screen shortly. Not quite. I will, okay. After information and testimonies presented on the agenda item, members will discuss the matter, and then each planning commission will vote independently to arrive at a decision. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit request will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of tonight's decision is filed in the county planning office by Monday, April 4th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be deferred to the county commission and city council for a joint hearing on Tuesday, April 26, 2016, at 5:00 PM. When the joint agenda is completed, the city planning commission will adjourn, and the meeting will continue as the county planning commission considers items beyond the joint zoning jurisdiction. At this time, the planning commissions will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the September 28th meeting are included on the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the planning commission members on any item on the consent agenda? On the city side? Nope. Okay, saying none. If the objections, let's see here, I got to get, lost my spot there. Next, I will read the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Okay, so let's start with first, the consent agenda. Again, the minutes are on there. Item two is a conditional use permit to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building area. This is located at 3101 South Riverview Avenue, approximately one mile east of Sioux Falls. Okay, item number three, conditional use permit. Now, we're to the regular agenda, I'm sorry. So that is all of the consent agendas. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move.
Yes, second. Okay, it's moved in second on the county side to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries.
On the city side.
So move.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Pass is on the city side.
Thank you. Now, do I have a motion to for the regular agenda? Forward with the regular agenda?
We move.
Second. Okay, we shall move forward. Item number three. Go ahead.
City side, do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. City side.
Good, thank you. Okay, item three is a conditional use permit number 1613 to allow resale, sale of fireworks on properties, which is located at 8101 West 12th Street on the west side of Sioux Falls. Kevin, your report.
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As was heard, this is a request to have retail selling of fireworks. On this screen here, you'll see that this is highlighted in red, but the, it also includes this parcel, at least a portion of this parcel here, they'll use this as a parking lot. Site is located on the south side of West 12th Street, approximately .2 miles south of Discovery Avenue and .2 miles east of Ellis Road, or excuse me, west of South Discovery Avenue and east of Ellis Road. So it's right in the center of it. It's surrounded by city limits on three sides, on the north, the east, and the south. And the petitioner is requesting retail fireworks sales in the A1 agricultural district, and this would be nine days of sales. The petitioner has included a narrative that includes some functional aspects of the sales that he's requesting, and this includes that his sales are primarily directed online, and this includes then would be mainly a pickup type of a location where they buy their stuff online and pick up here, which will also have retail onsite as well, as kind of a secondary operation. The operation is listed to be, requested to be operated from 8:00 AM to midnight. Now, I'll give you the site plan. And you can see here that the site plan, where you have parking throughout that whole area, and drive up around the building that he would be using on this property here. The plan is to convert the existing agricultural building into the warehouse for the operation. The driveway of the site plan indicates that flow of traffic will be in two orders and around the parking lot. As noted in the narrative, the building is long enough to allow for stacking of cars in case there is a lot of traffic to, that backs up. The petitioner wrote that the parking is located between the fireworks sales and the existing single-family dwelling, and he says that there's 15 to 20, but given the size of the area and the site visit, it's likely hold a lot more than 15 to 20 spots. The petitioner is requesting flags and a couple of signs for the business, and these flags would be located along 12th Street. The petitioner has noted that he would include several improvements to the building for security and aesthetics, make it look a little bit nicer than the barn that it is currently, and you'll see in pictures here that it's pretty rundown, so he'll have to improve the doors and entrances and that sort of thing. The county planning staff reviewed past conditional use permits for fireworks in this area in addition to this current request. The latest conditional use permit request was in 2012, in which case it was denied by both the planning commissions, and then reaffirmed the denial in the joint commission council meetings at the city appeal level. Previous ones in the area were in 2001 and 2004 that both stopped operating, so their permits expired, and there is a current operation located off this way, a little ways north of Suratoma, that has been operating since 1998. As part of a conditional use permit application, you look at the several criteria. And the first one is the effect and enjoyment of the property and the surrounding area for uses already permitted, and upon property values within the surrounding area. This request will create a busy retail environment, at least during the nine days that it is open, and there will be some set up and tear down as it gets the building full and taking it out. There's a retail subdivision to the south, approximately 260 feet to the south of the current building. And across from the street, there is the fire hall, fire station number 10, and vacant land, which is open for development. The second part is the effect of normal and orderly development and improvement in surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. The proposed land use is on two parcels, surrounded by the city, and this area does bode well for potential to become completely surrounded by the city or develop in the near term future. The utilities and access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. The petitioner has noted that, as the site visit took place, I noticed that there's the dirt driveway was there, and it's relatively narrow, and these would have to be widened and improved in order to make a better access. Even though it's nine days, a rainy event can make quite a mess on a highway like this. There's no drainage plan, and being that the property is fairly flat, but seems to drain well, it shouldn't need any drainage plan for this use. Off-street parking is remet. As mentioned earlier, petitioner has, I believe, has understated the amount of parking in that it will meet the total requirements for the ordinance. The petitioner noted in email correspondence that the fireworks deliveries to the site will be on the east side of the street and using the entrance for 8101 West 12th Street. Number five, that measures are taken to control, to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration, and lighting, so none of these will constitute a nuisance. Again, this will create a busy retail environment that has the potential to disturb the neighbors with lights and noise, and looking at previous conditional use permits, this was a large issue with the previous ones, with the neighbors not wanting the noise and potential garbage and pollution. The site is located, oh, the health, safety, and general welfare, the comprehensive plan. It is located next to an existing commercial district, right here. There is storage units, so that is one thing that is comparable, is kind of a commercial type use, but the potential nuisances may adversely affect the current residential land uses, and the Invision 2035 comprehensive plan has a goal to coordinate growth and land use among Minnehaw County and cities, townships, and other relative organizations, and the city has expressed concerns over future growth in this area. For that reason, the planning department, because of these concerns, staff recommends denial of conditional use permit 1613. I'll show some site pictures. There's an aerial view of the site, the proposed building in the center. There's the building, as you can see, it is in either repair or replacement. It would, there's the residential houses from approximately the beginning of the driveway. Looking to kind of the northeast, there's the property of the neighboring landowner, right to, with the trees there. Across the street, the driveway, they see the fences there that makes it fairly narrow. There's the storage units, and that's the front of the building. So, are there any questions?
Questions of staff? Yes, Bill?
I don't know if you could answer this, or maybe the city, but do we know what the future annexation plans are for the city in this, in this area along the south side of Highway 42?
I'm not sure exactly, and maybe Diane will take that.
The property that the building is located on was just annexed into the city within, I think, the past year, and is zoned as light industrial. To the west of that, I think that is within our five-year plan for annexation.
Kevin, I have a question, please. Do we have a setback for fireworks stands for things? You know, I just, is that a special thing for that or not?
We don't have anything specific, and yeah, I suppose the building is right on the property line. I guess I never measured it from the road, but I'm guessing it's closer than the required 50 feet.
I was thinking of the 260 feet you had from the residence.
Oh, no, we don't have any specific setback for that in the ordinance, no.
Okay, I know the ones to the west that were denied in 2012, the main concern at that time was traffic because of the junction of T Ellis Road and 42 or 12th Street. That was the main reason Dallas denied. Okay, thank you. We need to hear from the petitioner, unless there's any other questions of staff.
Kevin, could you go back to that one picture that showed the driveway coming in? That one, okay, there's the driveway coming in. I think maybe it was the next picture or the picture after that. No, let's go another one. Nope?
That's the end one.
The other direction. One more. So that's coming in the driveway right now.
So that's coming in the driveway, and I'm looking straight at the houses.
So those houses until midnight are going to have headlights flashing in the back windows?
As it's proposed now, yes.
As proposed now. Okay, that's one. Two, parking. Does the county have a specific, if I'm going to have parking, do I have to have gravel? Do I have, does it have to be asphalt? Does it have to be gravel?
For commercial.
I know the city does, we in the city do.
For commercial and industrial zoning districts and uses, we do, but for a temporary use such as this, we do not.
Okay. And the last one I got is, does the state, is the state fire marshal going to have to come in and approve that building with the fireworks? I know that they claim it's going to be the safest one. Well.
That I don't know.
Because there's a fire station across the street doesn't mean it's going to be safe.
I did not look into the, any of the state laws and, or fire marshal stuff, so that might be a question for the petitioner.
All right, thank you, Kevin. And the petitioner, are you here, please? Come forward, state your name and address.
Andy Jorgensen. Address is 1604 South Williams Avenue, Sioux Falls here, 57105. I just want to thank all you guys for being here today. This is something that you guys could be doing anything else on a night, it's really nice out, so just thank you for being here and hearing this crazy idea that I've got. I'd like to do whatever's best with the city, and so I've been working hard with the city and working hard with the county to see if there's something we can do, and so spent most of the hours of the night trying to type up a way that maybe we can cooperate together. But just a little bit of a background, I'm a native of this area, and so I grew up in T. Fireworks was kind of just the thing we drove past every single day, and so I went up to SDSU and got a degree, and I'm a young entrepreneur trying to make something awesome happen here in Sioux Falls. Background is I've ran a store for two years on the T exit, and so if you know what Sioux Falls fireworks used to be with the Rich Brothers, after they actually sold out, the store was given to me, and I ran it. It was very profitable, and I thought there's just a better way to do things. And so, kind of to go more into the idea, it's a really cool concept, we're going to take a website, and so what everybody gets to do is from your couch, you can view what your fireworks do before you buy them. So we're going to post videos of each product, and so that's kind of the business concept, you can purchase it online, and so that way you'll be purchasing it basically from whatever, whatever residence you're at, and you could probably do it from your car if you wanted to. And then this would primarily be our fulfillment arm of the business. I largely consider this some kind of online business, that this would be ideally something where we've got people off the property, on and off as quick as possible. My picture being something that we can make really, really efficient, and so it's not necessarily something that I'd like to pack the house and have, but maybe something we can have a steady traffic in. We're going to have timed deliveries, and so people are going to schedule when they're going to come on, we're going to know when the orders come in fast and when they don't. So I sent this guy, this petition over to you guys a little bit earlier today, I think it was when I finished it, later last night, but Sioux Falls Planning Department has expressed following concerns with granting this petition, and I completely acknowledge these, they're very valid, and so I've actually done some research myself, and identified below as reasons why they should decline this. The number one thing was disturbance to neighbors, and so I spoke with Diane, and I spoke with Jeff at the city, and, you know, had a good conversation with Jeff, and his primary thing was, hey, it's a disturbance to the neighbors, this is, this is not going to fly with, I mean, look at the picture there, there's houses right there. We think it's a reasonable distance from the houses, but just in order to look into this, I thought, I actually am concerned with this myself. I'd love to have good neighborhood rapport, I know that neighborhood is pretty tight-knit, and so what I did is I reached out to all the adjacent properties that you see in that image, I knocked on the doors of, and I walked door to door, introduced myself, and discussed the operation. I can tell you with confidence that nine out of 11 approved of the operation. One out of 11 was uninhabited, and one had contentions but requested a revisit because, had no contentions, but requested revisit because her husband wasn't home, and he was the decision maker. And so I just wanted to make sure that these neighbors that we see here, right here in the picture, were going to be all right with it, and so I did my due diligence, I walked around and just asked, hey, what would you guys think of this? I want to know every concern you guys have. If you look at figure one, I printed off something, sorry you guys can't see this, but it is a adjacent resident report, I went and took notes of everything that was spoken to, and so we've got the uninhabited house, obviously was that, but I've, I've got every response down to, well, hey now, you're not going to be blowing up my neighborhood, are you? Oh, sweet, that'd be awesome. Awesome, so that's, that's kind of a map that you guys can see. I went and labeled all of the houses, I even put in some, because Google Maps is a little behind, you know, they do a lot of things, right? But at any rate, we looked at the houses, and I identified the ones that would be most directly affected by this, and I just wanted to know, because if I got 10 people that said, there's no way I want you to do this, I would likely not have done it. This was not the case, though. A lot of people invited me into their homes and said, man, this is really exciting, I really hope you have the big stuff. Man, I'm really excited because I hope you give me a neighborhood discount, you know, you, you know, give me something, give me something to return, I'm going to be shooting them off my driveway, you know, they're really excited about that, and I was not expecting that. I was expecting from what I had heard from past conditional use permits, that the neighborhood was going to argue against it, but almost every single one of them was pretty, pretty accepting of it, and the fact that they were, that was pretty surprising. They did have questions, they said, if you're blowing stuff up in my backyard, my kids aren't going to sleep. Well, this is definitely not the case, it is illegal for me to shoot fireworks on my property, not only that, but it's just not logical for me to do next to a building full of them, so I don't want that. But, so we're not going to be discharging them on the property, it's a temporary business that's legally limited to nine days, so that's one thing I considered in this, and it's going to be focused, like I said, on pickup orders, and so this is going to be something that we're going to move property or businesses or customers off really quickly. And then the next thing that Jeff and Diane had mentioned was that the comprehensive plan is to develop it, and the city would get engulfed. But unfortunately, the owner of the land told me, and it kind of broke my heart at first, he said, this is the perfect land for you, I'll let you use it for the next five years, because I want to build an apartment building right on that thing. And I went, man, well, I guess I'm not going to have it for too long then. But to ensure that, to ensure that this is something that I cannot be locked into, I would really be willing to propose a five-year sunset clause. This is something that Kevin and I had discussed, that would allow this joint committee to review the conditional use permit considering future city growth, and so that would be something I'd be more, more than willing to consider. If you guys want to narrow it down to something like that, I'd be totally all right with that. It's, just means I'm going to be put here again, looking for some more land, asking you for another piece, but considering that I think it could be a real benefit to Sioux Falls, I would like to consider that. In addition to the concerns, I think that there's some real benefits to Sioux Falls that this has, and I think there's some real reasons why it would actually be a pretty good thing, but the first one is just, just kind of with compliance, it complies with the 2002 revised Minnehawha Joint County Ordinance, being zoned A1 agriculture, and figure two B, I just copy down directly from the ordinances down there, that in section three, it states that you can sell fireworks if it's within a nine-day period and falls within a conditional use permit criteria. And so what I did is I went down and walked through all of the contentions in the letter that you guys received, and so for criteria one, there really wasn't any concerns with the Sioux Falls Planning Department. Criteria number two, they were concerned about city growth. Again, the guy wants to put me out of business in five years, and so I don't see this as being an issue for the 2032 Sioux Falls plan, and I would be able to sign a sunset clause for that. The access to the property is relatively narrow and made of dirt. We mentioned adding gravel to the property if need be, that was a suggestion, I'd be totally open to that, if that's a bad idea, we don't necessarily need to do that, but it does fit two vehicles. If we need to expand it, we can do that, too. The landowner has access to the fence, we can build out a bigger driveway, we don't see that as being an issue. If that still doesn't fix it, we have a third driveway on the east side. We can have one coming in and one for traffic to come out, that's something we could also adjust, I mean, we've got two different points of entry here. And so we addressed parking space, we've got six acres of space. My old store had .62 acres, and I fit 20 cars on it, and it was really exciting because it was all full. We could triple that on this land, I don't plan on it, I really don't want to, it means I'm not doing my job, but we definitely could. And then for criteria five, the planning department is concerned that offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration, and lighting will disturb the residences. As I've said, the residences are on board with this business, so they have accepted the fact, they said, I'm excited for this. If I could pull up my Facebook on my phone, I would show you, I've got some of the housing owners right there that were upset they couldn't make it tonight. They were really excited to come to this, and I didn't expect that to happen at all. But also, there's also the case of fumes being generated, we don't see any extra fumes being generated. I'm not going to be lighting smoke bombs off on my property, I'm not going to be lighting large cakes off, I'm going to take that off to some farmland way outside a town for the firing of it, but that's not something that I even logically would want to do, so I don't see any extra fumes being created that aren't already being created on that. And then criteria six, with the general health and safety, the report cites the Invision 2035 comprehensive plan, so you can see city growth, again, we got the sunset clause with that, and then they questioned, and this is maybe answer your guys' questions, whether any building is qualified to sell fireworks, that's a very good question, and the answer is no. Not every building, any building can be used to sell fireworks. There's a very, very tight restriction to that, and that it has to have two points of exit, it's a really good idea for a building with explosives in it. And so this horse barn, for lack of a better term, actually has been equipped with two exits already, and so it's almost one of those things that I walked in, I said, no, this is not going to work unless we got two exits. There's a large swinging door that you could fit a car into, that actually is a point of exit two. So it does comply with the state fire marshal, they would walk into the building, they'd say, we don't know why you want to do it in this building, because it's a little rundown, but suit yourself, exit one, exit two, make sure you have signage for no firing fireworks within a certain amount of feet, no smoking within a certain amount of feet, and then hour restrictions, so the hour is legally limited to midnight, that's why that time was picked. It's not because I'm trying to disturb the neighbors, that's just the legal restriction that I ran for my past store, so, but that's the only reason why I would pick those hours for that. So, so I met all the application requirements that Kevin requested, I got the application in on time, I fulfilled all the fees, I ponied up $250 to get this up, and it was well worth it, it's a great learning experience, too. Provided a site plan with all the details that Kevin requested. Number two, I'm going to breeze through these so we can get moving for the night, but the operation is going to help local nonprofits, I'm talking to DecoTilities, and I'm talking to Good Samaritan Society. What we're going to do is we're going to offer a 5% discount to all nonprofit workers in the city. An additional 5% of their purchases are going to go back to the nonprofit. So now we have Nathan Stolling I've been talking to, Mike Fowler at the Good Samaritan Society, and they're really excited about this. I can tell you from, with confidence, that the T exit alone does $1 million in revenue in nine days, and so if there's any way that we can utilize this to better other businesses and nonprofits, I would do this 100% of the way. And so I'm going to try and do that, obviously not at the cost of a completely loss of revenue, but this is something that I feel passionate about, and I've already talked to these people, they would be able to vouch for that as well. And then I want to operate this to advance business in South Dakota, fireworks industry is a very old one, I've talked to my competitors directly, I called them on the phone and said, my name's Andy Jorgensen, I'd like to do this, why aren't you doing something online? And he said, well, I don't have a computer, so you have fun. And I was encouraged by that, he says, hey, when you get that figured out, come talk to me, man, I'd like to talk to you more about this. And so in Watertown, Lou has expressed interest in converting his into an online one, so this is kind of a test pilot that we can use in other states and other cities, we can bring attention to Sioux Falls, that Fire Brothers fireworks came from this area and helped grow this local economy as well, so that's something that is also good as well. And there's also another store two blocks down the road, the traffic already exists, there's fireworks traffic condensed to one entire building, and so the traffic already exists, if they've got two stores, in my eyes, if they've got two stores to go to, that's going to disperse the traffic, it's going to disperse the clutter, so they're not jammed up inside city limits, this is still outside city limits, it still follows compliance with that. So I've got a little review down there, it's a nine-day period, it's really temporary, there's no new structures that are going to be added, we're not building a massive yellow building with big lights around it, it's a horse barn that we're going to put a door on and call it good. It complies with the ordinance guidelines, there's another one down the street, I'm willing to make reasonable accommodations to offer a sunset clause, the owner plans to develop, but even if I don't do the sunset clause, he's probably going to kick me out anyways. It's a reasonable distance from properties, I think it's one of the safer ones in town with the fire station, but I could be contended on that point, that just seemed like a reasonable thought to me that the fire hose could probably be reached from the station to my building. Not that we want that to happen. No fireworks will be discharged, and it has two separate entrances to that, it meets compliance for the legal sale of fireworks, the neighbors have expressed approval for that, business transactions will be done online, so traffic's going to be low, we're going to raise money for nonprofits, and we're going to advance business in South Dakota and potentially other states. I also have the experience that can back this up, so with all these details, I would really, really request your guys' approval in this. I would love the opportunity to make something awesome happen, but I trust you guys to make the right decision, so thank you so much for your time.
Questions for Mr. Jorgensen?
I've got one. Is the building even structurally sound?
It is, yeah, it is. So, right now, he's got, he's got two vehicles in there, he's got some things stored, stored in there, and so when we looked at it, and we can have it professionally looked at, but there's some issues with, obviously not having a door, Kevin got pictures of that, but there's some siding that needs to be painted, and then one of the things that's going to be kind of a pain is to And then, one of the things that's gonna be kind of a pain is to plug up the leaky roof. But structurally, it is sound, yes, so.
Other questions?
Is this in the floodplain? I know just down from there, it's floodplain, but this is not part of the floodplain. Okay?
Whew, that's a relief.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Have you considered other properties?
Yes, yep. So, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Ted Walnoffer. He used to, he used to be part of Walmart here in town. Him and I drove around for an entire day. And the story between, between this land is Dan Asoff is a mutual connection of mine. And he said, "Hey, I heard you're trying to start a firecracker stand." I said, "I sure am." And he said, "Well, I've got land. It's outside of city limits. Come take a look at it." And I'd be willing to, if you're starting off, I wouldn't charge you to use the land. And I didn't want to. Ideally, I don't want to not comply. I don't want any conflict with, at any city, with any county. This is just the land that was given to me. It literally came on a phone call. And so, I drove north of town. I mapped it out. Kevin helped me print off, or showed me how to print off maps and how to click them and how to search for land. The one thing that we are fighting here, and if you guys have anybody, like anybody in this room that has any other land that would be compliant with this, I'd love to talk to them. Unfortunately, it has to be outside of city limits. It has to be within that nine-day frame. It has to be available. And I personally can't afford it if somebody was gonna charge me $10,000 bucks for it. I wouldn't have a business, and so, that is something I definitely looked into. But as Kevin can say, people walk in with four applications for fireworks land use. This is going up quick. It's kind of the Wild West. I just thought I was really, really blessed to have this opportunity. Otherwise, I mean, I'm gonna be looking for secondary land, and it might not have enough time for that to happen. And so, we're gonna be on our toes, looking for another place. I don't know if it's gonna happen necessarily.
Thank you. Any other questions? Just, we got two right here.
The commissioner from Sioux Falls raised a valid point about the lights coming in. And I realize that it's dark. I mean, it will be light longer at that point in time in the summer. Would you ever be open, since these are primarily online orders, to have business hours only open until 9:00 PM, so that the headlights are not an issue?
Yep, so, there's, I actually think of that, too. So, there's two things with that. Number one, I would consider other hours. There was something to the extent of hours being, you know, too late. We don't want lights coming in. I did talk to the neighbors, and so, this is something I would go straight to them. And I would say, "There is a potential for these three houses, or whatever is directly in the way of that thing, that lights are gonna be hitting. What can I do to accommodate that?" I would be willing to open that discussion. I've opened up other discussions. So, I would be willing to consider that. If it takes a 10:00 PM close time, that's perfectly reasonable to me. On a business level, I can say that, you know, opening it till midnight is very, very advantageous to my business. But this isn't just about my business, all right? This is not just about me making a ton of money. This is about me, you know, doing something cool and hopefully helping a lot of people and giving them a better experience. So, ultimately, if it causes a bad experience with the neighbors, and they don't want that, I don't necessarily need that to, to exist. We don't need to be open till midnight. But if you can imagine everybody on the Fourth of July, and they're having a good time, and, "Well, I heard there's this place that we can just drive up and pick up our fireworks." 11 o'clock is probably when those orders would come in. And so, that's a market I would miss out on, but I'd be totally open to looking into other options for that hours.
Well, I have a question related to that as well. If cars entered from the east and then exited the other driveway?
That's a good point.
Would that eliminate people entering the lot and shining lights on those homes?
That would.
If it were one, you know, an entrance from the east and then a turnaround?
That definitely would eliminate that. This, there's a barn, there's woods, there's those storage units. And that would, because they would actually, when I initially thought of this, Dan basically walked up, and it was interesting. He had this idea for this land more than I did. I said, "Hey, man, I'm gonna pull on this gravel road. They're gonna pull up. They're gonna take their number. We'll stick it on top of their car, and then we'll just load up their fireworks, and they can take off." He said, "No, why don't you just pull into this grassland here?" And so, that was the plan that we'd kind of formed. I had no concern of that at the time when talking to Kevin. We just kind of went with what we initially had thought, but that's a really good idea. I appreciate that.
So, the current six-acre grass site that you're looking at here, how is that currently zoned?
A1.
A1 ag?
Yep, A1 agriculture, yep.
And the, the old farm site there to the east and the buildings, you're gonna use that zoned how? The same, is it the same, same ag?
Yep.
And then, I've noticed driving past, there are a lot of demolition and cleanup going on on that site. Is that going to continue?
No, so, he's chopped down all those trees. I've talked to him. I said, "Oh, man, if I have a fireworks business here, we're gonna have a lot of work to do." Part of the condition is that I'm gonna be picking up his land with him. He's like, "My barn needs a new roof. Would you, you wouldn't mind, would you, Andy?" And I said, "I really don't have a choice," so. But I'd love to help him with that, cleaning up those sticks, cleaning up the trees. And just, I mean, it's advantageous for my business to not have it as is, and so.
I was just curious if that, the building you were looking at was slated for demolition anytime in the near future, so.
No, nope. So, he has quoted me at five years, is when he really wants to build an apartment there. Again, that was really unfortunate. I was gonna say, "Well, maybe we can work something out." But he wants to, an apartment building there. It's gonna be way more advantageous for him, so.
Any other questions? The petitioner? Anyone else in the audience want to address this issue? We can always bring Mr. Jorgensen back if we have a question.
Mike, I have other questions.
Is there electricity to the building already, and what about restroom facilities?
Yep, so when we ran a store on the T-exit, we get a porta potty. We can get a handicap-accessible one, or we can just do a regular one. I don't remember which one, the one that we ran on the T-exit was. But we do comply with that. We wanna make sure that there's restrooms. And then, we measured it out. I think Kevin had brought that up. We could put a restroom on the gravel part of the driveway, or in some pocket of that area, on the south part of the side, maybe next to the storage units or something. But that is something that I have looked into.
Is there electricity running to the building right now?
Yep, yep, so he, he mentioned that there, there is some form of electricity that he had at one point. I think he quoted me, I think it was Quest or another energy company, was coming in to look at what was previously done with the building and look into what needed to be done further. But I don't have an exact answer for that. But it would basically take an extension cord for internet use and some lights. But if that doesn't follow with compliance, I'm willing to look into whatever will follow with compliance for electricity.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, I've got one more. Now, I'm sure you've done a marketing study, right?
Yeah.
How much traffic do you anticipate? How much, how many cars do you anticipate in a day's time to come through your facility? This is just some information.
Yeah, yeah. If it was similar to that of the T-exit, which it's actually not, the T-exit required no marketing, because it exists. It's the fireworks T-exit. I had roughly two or three on the property at most times. You guys will, you guys will be interested to learn. No business really happens, and this is the nine-day business, isn't really nine days. Nobody actually buys their fireworks on the 27th, 28th, 29th. I've got the revenue charts to show that. I only did about $1,000 to $2,000 in revenue the first couple of days of the season. It's only on the second, third, and fourth that people even really care, at which point I had about 20 cars. And there is a capacity to that where cars just won't fit, and then they'll go somewhere else. That's advantageous for the stores down the street. If they see a packed thing, the natural inclination is to say, "I don't wanna mess with that. I know there's one down on Surtoma and 12th Street. Let's go to that one." So, cars would have that option if it does get too packed. But I would say those three days are the only ones you would really see 20, 20 cars on. But with 12th Street, it might not even be that much. It might be 15 at a time, which is still a decent amount.
Well, the question I'm asking is, is you're, you're gonna be online, and I'm gonna drive up, go through. How many per hour would you anticipate? You're saying 20 of them are sitting in the parking lot.
That was for a traditional store, yep.
For a traditional store. So, just say you got 10 or 15 sitting in the parking lot. How many are you gonna have constantly? Have you done a marketing study of how many per hour? How many orders, online, how many online orders do you expect in a day?
Yep, so that question I have no information for. No one has ever done this. No one has ever done an online fireworks store. Frankly, this could flop. I could be sitting in that shed with a bunch of fireworks at the end of the season. It'd be really sad. But this is really an experiment to see, do people want to buy fireworks online? Is this advantageous? Frankly, we could have four the entire year, because people just don't trust buying them online. So, my guess is that it would be successful, but that's why I'm taking the chance to do it. I would anticipate, even if we opened up what she said to be the east side driveway, we could easily fit, I mean, we could line them up. We could probably fit eight cars there. And then, we could probably line them up, and so, it wouldn't be in the way of any of that. But I don't have any metrics for you, 'cause no one's ever done this before, so.
I just wanna make a point that it's open to the public, too, right? I mean, so you can have walk-in traffic?
Yeah.
And you can have drive-up traffic. Just wanna make sure we're all understanding that.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Question maybe for Andy and the staff as well. When it comes to the building, do you have a plan for what improvements it needs? What you're planning to do, if not for safe, but just to be secure?
Mm-hmm.
Looks like there's probably a lot of team there.
Yeah, so if I'm gonna spend $10,000 to $15,000 in my own dollars, I'm gonna make sure it's secure, for sure. I looked into, one, we're gonna have to plug up some holes in the roof. I don't know how extensively that is. Dan is the owner of the building. So, when I mention something, he's a farmer, and so, he kinda says, "Nope, we're just gonna plug up the holes. You're not gonna re-roof it." So, that's, that's just something I'm gonna have to live with that. The siding, he wants to take some of the wood that he has existing on his property, which would be salvage wood, and just kind of patch up the holes in that. It would not be extensive, I can tell you that much. I don't have the biggest budget in the world. I'm still a young entrepreneur. Maybe someday I would be able to afford that. But I don't have an extensive of, besides patching holes on the side, patching the ceiling, and creating a secure doorway. And so, outside of that, we're gonna be sweeping some of the horse remains out of it and taking down some of the structures. He's got a couple Chevys parked in there. We're gonna have to move and clean out, too. So, there's a lot of work to be done, but no specific major renovations are gonna be done to that building. And painting it, of course, so it's not gray and peeling.
Scott, is there anything within ordinances or oversight from your shop?
I think that's latitude of the, of the planning commission. If you wanted to make, if you decide you're going to ultimately approve this, that could be one of the conditions that you could add. Something like the applicant provide a written plan of improvements to be made to the structure if you wanted to.
Cool.
If it looks like it's gonna move towards improvement, I'll agree with all.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other city side, county side? If not, we'll, okay, thank you. We'll open up anyone from the audience who wants to address this issue.
Do I stand here?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none, we will close the floor and individual discussions on the county side. Comments, wishes? Like I say, these are these nine-day fireworks stands that show up once a year.
Mr. Chairman, I see that the city has concerns, so maybe they could tell us what they are.
Go through that first, all right?
Mr. Chair, if I ask Diane to come up for just a second? Diane, Andy certainly has an enthusiasm.
He does.
And make me wanna go out and buy some fireworks, but. Anything that he's added to this discussion that would change staff's viewpoint in regards to?
No, you know, Jeff Schmidt and I met with him last week, and he was very enthusiastic, and I appreciate that. But no, our concern is the same. It is surrounded on three sides by the city limits. There are homes that close, and although they, in concept, might agree with the plan to have the drive-up for sales of fireworks, you just don't know the conditions of what could happen out there, a building full of fireworks that close to residential homes. Yes, I understand there's a fire station for the city across the street there, but just in terms of safety for those residential homes, we don't think that that's a good idea. We think further out, outside of city limits is probably a better idea.
Diane, help me just for a second here. If we were to say no, would this young fellow have an opportunity to go to the joint city and county?
Yes, he would.
Mission meeting and restate his case?
Yep.
Thank you.
I would remind you, however, there is a fireworks store in the north end of Sioux Falls that is surrounded by the city.
Yes, we're aware of that. It is an island, yeah, to be annexed in.
Only fireworks stores in Sioux Falls.
Right. Well, and we are trying to, at least with this one that's before us tonight, hold off from creating any other problems like we have in the other locations, so. And the other thing I would point out for the petitioner, I think you mentioned about offering those homes to the south there. A discount to purchased fireworks. Just remember those are within the city limits, and they can't actually set those off in their driveway, as you indicated.
I agree.
I guess I would ask her one more question, which is, why hasn't the city annexed this property? Why did they create another island or whatever?
You know, it's just been a long experience. They have a schedule going out about 10 years of various locations to try to get annexed in the city. Some of them are more problematic than others, and it depends on who is more willing than others to be annexed as well. But Director Cooper and another individual in our office is working on that, so.
Thanks. The ones I don't understand are the islands. That's really kind of sad, really, in my opinion, but that's what it is. Okay, so on the county side, do we have a motion or further discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to have it said that Minnehaha County is not a good place to go into business. So, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, the motion for approval. Is there a second to that motion?
I would like to just make one comment about approval. As part of considering that if something was to happen where you get approval, if you just approve it, there's no conditions attached. I did make up a kind of a rough list of conditions. If it leaves that way.
I can see some additional things, like time.
And most of them were things that were more or less discussed tonight, like hours. But they're up to you, and if it gets a pass, then we can maybe use this as a template. If not, then it just goes away.
Okay, so you have limitations on the signage. Building permits required. I don't have any flags. You got hours of operation, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Between 8:00 and 10:00, when's that on the, open to the public?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I do have, you know, he's got the list of stipulations. There were a lot of ifs in this. If they come in from the east. There's nothing saying that they have to come in from the east.
Could be added.
So, that, that's one of the stipulations that you might wanna to enter. Because I do feel that if you get 10 cars an hour after 10 o'clock, driving down that driveway, and those headlights are going into those houses, we're gonna start getting complaints. You know, after it gets dark. And that's when you're saying you're gonna have a lot of your online, well, the guy at 11 o'clock's gonna show up, and boom. So, that, to me, should be a stipulation if you're gonna approve it. Like I said, there's just a lot of ifs. And we have to put, make those ifs solid, almost, I feel as a, as a group, if that's the way you wanna approve it. If you wanna approve it like it is without any of these, I guess that's one way to do it. But I don't feel comfortable approving it without some stipulations.
Well, Mike and Steve, so far, I don't have a second, so.
No, he doesn't have a second, which I should've had before we discussed it. It could die for a second, if there's no second. Is there a second? If not, the motion dies. Do you have an alternative motion?
Move to deny.
Move for denial?
I'll second it.
Second? Any further discussion? All right, those in favor of denying the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries to deny the petition.
On the city side?
I think it just got real easy on the city side, didn't it, Mr. Chair? If one side denies, isn't it denied?
We can approve it. But it's a joint, but then it would go, in turn, go to the city council if we approved it at that point. Again, I need a motion and a second for discussion.
Motion to deny.
Any discussion?
I love the young fellow's story. I love the young fellow's story. I think we're all, love to see a young fellow get going. I'm just not sure this is the right location for that.
I would agree with the commissioner in that we're not here to approve the business plan. We, the business plan sounds fabulous. We're here to look at the land use. And this particular issue, as Diane stated, we're not, we do not want to create any more problematic areas for land use, so. So I would support the denial as well.
Okay, any other discussion?
Nothing new to add, Mr. Chair.
Okay, with that, I need, the motion has been made to deny. All in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All. How would you put that? Force carried.
Good enough. Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, moving on to item four. Item four is conditional use permit sixteen fourteen to allow rubble dump, and it is located half mile west on Ellis Road on Sand Street, and is currently in a gravel quarry. And Kevin, are you presenting this one as well?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For those that are standing, a chair has opened up over there.
There's a few out in the hallway too, if you want to drag one in.
Kevin Hookman, county planning staff. This is conditional use permit. It's also in the joint area. It's for a rubble dump site for the storage and processing of wood products. It's located approximately a half mile north and a half mile west of Twelfth Street and Ellis Road intersection. The closest residential development is Cherry Lake addition to Sioux Falls, approximately a quarter mile south of proposed site. The site is currently a non-operating gravel quarry, as you can kind of see the lake there, quarry. The petitioner is requesting to process wood products. This will primarily be trees, branches, and then the addition of dry wood products such as pallets and wood lumber. And the petitioner has submitted a narrative to describe his, his, what he plans on doing, and he said pick-up and drop-off hour for the site would be Monday to Friday, six to six, and Saturday, six to twelve. And then the, as I noted, that he would be picking up tree branches, pallets, dimensional lumber, et cetera, and storing them on-site for a period of time until there's enough accumulated for processing. And that time processing equipment will be brought to the site and processed there, and then shipped off-site with semi trucks and trailers. The petitioner submitted site plan. This is the old site plan. I don't know, the new site plan didn't get put on there. There is a newer site plan that has been replaced, that old one, which does have the wood piles located along right here, and then right along here, which is because staff notified him that there is flood plain on the property, and that would move his storage outside of the flood plain. Staff contacted the State Department of Environment and Natural Resources regarding the permit, and Jim Winty responded to it, and he said that he has worked with the petitioner before, and as long as there's just clean wood with no paint or, or processed wood, then he can go ahead and accept it without any state permit. One obstacle of the development is that the map is located on the flood plain, as I noted. The figure on the, on your site plan here notes the flood plain handed out that kind of goes down by the road area, right here in the site plan roughly, is where it reaches. And it's presumably that that was at the time of the survey, the extent of the quarry. And he will have to stay outside of the flood plain. Should the flood plain change with a new proposal for, or new? Oh, yeah. Kind of get the, the idea of the size of the piles. They are gonna be substantially large, as you can see. On the site, he plans on having a spot, a shed for housing the guard there. And then he'll have some equipment storage on the north side. Storage, and you could do the guard shed to get people moved out. Two different piles for the two different wood products.
Kevin, that is Sand Street on the south side of the.
And that is Sand Street on the south side, yep. As part of the conditional use permit, we should consider the conditional use permit criteria. Number one is the effect on enjoyment of the property in the surrounding area of uses already permitted in the area. The surrounding area is primarily, primarily gravel quarries and some ag land, but nearby, as I noted, a quarter mile away, there is residential site as well. And the Sand Street is located just in south, and there is one residence that's still located on Sand Street, about seven hundred feet away from the property. Planning staff of the city of Sioux Falls has expressed concerns about the noise, odor, and traffic and air due to prevailing north winds of the site and the Cherry Creek development. The effect of normal orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant land uses in the area. Their primary land use is still quarries. They'll likely continue for some time until the quarry is depleted and then move on. Once that has happened, there is potential that they will, new residential developments such as Cherry Lake will go in, where it'll be that type of development with the lake-type front properties, in which case this use may persist into the future, or has the potential to disturb future growth. The utilities, access road, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. This site will not need any known utilities, and it's going to be equipment-based. The petitioner has extended utilities that are necessary there. The Sand Street does provide access, and Sand Street is a little bit under-maintained, but, and it's likely because of the immense amount of traffic with large trucks and, for the gravel quarries. That off-street parking and loading requirements are met. It's a large site, so that is met very nicely. The measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration. As noted earlier, this does have a potential effect for neighbors, for odor, traffic, and air. One thing that does have, it is located in a quarry, a former quarry, so it's located approximately ten, twelve feet below grade of the road. So that should help bring some of that stuff point going up and not out over the trees. If there's any noises, it should help deflect some of that issues. The health, safety, and general welfare of the public in comprehensive plan. The nuisances that this land use may create may also affect health, general welfare of the public. Added traffic on Sand Street may also further deplete the road. Staff did contact the township on this, and I never got a response regarding road maintenance. The proposed project would be beneficial in cleaning, creating a close location for area residents to drop off waste products, but the city has expressed concern regarding the wood processing site and future growth area. Because of the concerns and the potential for nuisances, staff recommends denial for conditional use permit sixteen fourteen, and I'll go through some pictures. And I believe the petitioner has some pictures as well, so. Alright, so this is the quarry. You can see in the background there that it's dug out. This is where the, the primary site would be held. You can, this is going down to the quarry, the driveway, you can get an idea of the depth. But the quarry, the driveways and stuff are in pretty good shape. Drainage isn't too big of a problem. There are some puddles there after the spring rains, but in general, it all kind of went away pretty quick. This is Sand Street, as I noted earlier. It is pretty used, and, but this traffic would be similar to the traffic that is currently using the road, so. That's all I got. Any questions?
Questions for Kevin?
This is the site from aerial perspective.
Yes?
Do we have any estimates for the increase in traffic compared to what's on there now for trucks?
I don't have any, have any estimates. The petitioner has not added any ideas of that, so it'd be up to him. I suppose if you look at some of the, if there was a storm, it would increase. Say if there's an ice storm, you know, it, it, it might be, depending on the weather, the increase in traffic, so.
Kevin, there is one house on the road, and is that to the east there?
Yep, right here.
So most of the traffic would be going right by that house, right?
It would be.
I've had complaints from the folks that live there about the dust previously.
Okay.
And I've looked into it as far as with the township and stuff. Nobody claims this road. It's owned by, like, the gravel people. And they're at the mercy of those folks.
The road happens to be on a half-mile. Nobody claims half-mile roads, since it's not a section.
There's a county map, but it, no one, no one owns it.
Any additional questions for Kevin? If not, since we're on staff reports, I'm gonna ask the Sioux Falls staff to comment on this, because I know it's gonna happen sooner or later, so let's.
Actually, I think Kevin did a good job expressing our concerns with it. We do have a concern with dust, as well as noise, with the residential to the south, and with the expected growth here in the future, so we do recommend denial. We don't anticipate any further type of use like this. With the semis, with the grinding, whatever else they might do with those wood products, we do think that would create a disturbance to the residential around there, so.
Any questions, Sioux Falls? Diane, the staff? Okay, Phil?
Diane, I don't know if you know the answer, but there's obviously active gravel pits there and inactive ones, intermixed. I assume that those gravel pits are free to operate well into the future?
They are, as far as I know. Do you know a different?
Directively for us, but yes, there's several permitted gravel pits out there. There's also several grandfathered ones that are in some state of use, like this one. So, yeah, it's, that Skunk Creek is, that's the formation where you have lots of sand and gravel, so it's likely that there will continue to be sand and gravel operations up and down that Skunk Creek corridor.
Yes. Do the gravel pit permits expire after a certain period of time for non-use, or are they good in perpetuity?
Some of them are grandfathered in, so they just have to keep, you know, a little bit of activity, and I think they're good about going out there and doing a little bit of work and pulling out some gravel. And then some of the other ones, I'd have to go back and look, but a lot of the, many of the conditional use permits that were issued didn't have a sunset clause, so as long as they can continue to use them, they're, they're good to go.
Yes, we have included some. The one that's over by I-90, we did have a ten-year drop-dead date on that one. That was kind of one of the first ones that we did that way.
I think that was one of the first ones we put a sunset clause on.
Yes.
Follow-up question on roads. So if a township isn't currently doing anything with it, and it's pretty much up to the gravel pits, is there anything that we could do if this was approved as a condition for a haul road agreement or anything, if there's really not a overseeing body?
No one to have a haul road agreement with. That being said, I, I, I think it would be, I, I think it would, it would be a hindrance to say you want a haul road agreement. The next best thing would be that you obligate this applicant to do something with the road, which you could do, but probably would, in essence, hobble or, you know, kill this project, because there is a lot of truck traffic on this road, and to put all that responsibility on one person would probably bankrupt you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Diane. Okay, the petitioner is here, I assume. You come forward.
Hello, I'm Mike Marlowe. I'm an attorney from Yankton, South Dakota. I have the privilege of representing Muller Pallets. They're a family-owned LLC. I've got Margie, the owner, and Henry, and Becca's back here, she's the daughter. And the son also works with the, with the company as well. I want to just point out a couple things. We also have Chad Potters here as well. He might be answering some questions. Chad's, excuse me, Chad's one of the, he's the title, operations manager? Something like that. In any event, the, the denial is based primarily on three things, as I understand it. Odor, air quality, and noise, from what I just heard, I think. Dust and noise, I guess, was the primary two. Truck traffic in this area is already extensive. We have quarries, active quarries, and, and, believe me, from the photos that we have, you can tell that they're very active, and we've got large piles of gravel. They operate on an extensive basis, haul out of there routinely, and the amount of traffic that we're gonna add to this site is very small. I'm surprised if you're worried about traffic, if you don't come to the commission and say why you're worried. Nobody asked what our traffic counts would be. We can give you a pretty good idea. We have a site that's already a grind site, just south of the T-exit. You can see it on the, on the interstate every time you go by. And as far as dust and noise and things like that, I don't think anybody came down to evaluate the dust and noise and vibration or anything else, air quality issues that come off of that plant. We do have a little videotape that shows you exactly what the dust is that comes off when we grind, but it's, if we're able to keep that site, and that's our intention, is to keep that site and have this as just an alternative site that's really more convenient for folks in the city and some of our other users to drop off products at this site. If we're able to keep our other site, we expect that we would probably have about twenty-five percent of our grinding operation at this site. If not, and we have to keep, and we have to put all of it here, we'd be looking at grinding at about approximately eight times per year. So if we keep our current site, it'll be about two times a year we would grind at this site, up to a maximum of about eight times. That grinding operation, including setup, grinding, hauling, and tear-down, is about seven days or so, seven working days, per cycle. So we're looking at between two weeks and perhaps as many as eight weeks of actual operation. What they do is they have, people bring materials onto the site, they pile them, and when the, when it's, when they've got enough product there to grind, they then bring a portable grinder in, grind the material, and then within approximately two weeks or so after that, all the material will be, would be moved out. This material goes primarily to the Poet ethanol site. So in addition to having a place where it's free for people to drop off their product, and somebody mentioned, you know, when we had a huge storm, these folks, you can still see the wood products down at their other site where they accepted truck after truck after truck, and it was all, they brought it in for, at no cost. So people in the city can drop off, contractors can drop their products off, the wood haulers routinely come and drop off at this site, and I think they'll, they think it's a very useful and helpful site. So while you'd have people bringing product in on occasion, our operation would be very limited in this area. Couple other things. I think we can move to a couple of my photos here. Thank you, Becca. I can use my computer at my office occasionally, and when I'm in trial, I always have it so that I have it set up for my use, so. Alright, map first, if we can, please. Thank you. I hope yours is a little bit.
Bigger than that.
Alright, pretty much the same operations we saw before. All right, pretty much the same operations we saw before. Thank you. Can move my cursor here, I think. Right over here is our area. If you can see that left-hand side. Is there a way to highlight that? Okay. XER's over that way a little ways. I'm sorry about this, folks. All right, so that's the site. As you can see, right along the road, it's actually... You don't just see the road or see the site from the road. There are trees along there, and also, it's a lot further down than 12 feet, although I think that's in areas perhaps. But if you look at the first photo we have of the... I'll kind of just take you through a little bit. So, on the right-hand side of that, there's the entrance to the facility, right there. Here's a picture of the entrance. There's a... It's gated currently. You can see in the background, that's the quarry right next door. That's not the quarry that's closest to the houses. That's much closer than that. So, this is actually on the northeast part of the road, so that's our entrance. You actually drive in, go to the east-west, and then down into the pit. You can see that's the pit looking back to the east. And you can see there's a pile of gravel. Point back there, right about just to the left there. Right there, that little... Little light part right there is a pile of gravel that you see in that next quarry over. Our next picture... There. Is standard Chevy pickup, or standard Ford pickup, I guess, down the bottom of the quarry. So, you can see, if the pickup is approximately six feet tall, it's probably at least 12 feet. And our piles wouldn't be no more than 10 to 12 feet. So, you wouldn't even see any of our piles from the road, and certainly not from the housing development. And like I said, the piles will only be there on a short basis. That's the pickup looking, again, back toward... Actually, this is the housing development back there. You can't see it, and they can't see you. In between this area and the housing development is a quarry and a lake. That's actually a picture from the road looking back to the south and west. You can see the operating quarry. Were these photos taken about earlier this week?
On Friday.
On Friday, so the quarry is actively operating. You can see that, houses in the background. And this is actually between our proposed site and the housing development. Next picture is just a little bit to the west. You get rubble piles, equipment, piles of quarried rock. And again, this is looking from the Sands Road, south. This is actually from the... A point further east, right, where the park entrance is. And it looks to the... Straight to the west, and basically, the purpose for this is the houses are right over here. The... You can see the extent of the quarrying that goes on. Our site would be about in this area. You can also look further to the... We couldn't get it all in picture. So, that's additional quarrying that's going on in this very neighborhood. This is actually an operation, if I can go back to the first picture. I need to zoom back in here. Yep, getting there. So, our operation will be right here. If you look straight down the road, about a mile and a half, there's this location right here. Let's see. Help me there?
Yep.
Right there, yep. You can see that that location is almost exactly... Yep? Working on it here. Yeah, so you've got the park in the south, our location's to the west, and this... That's good enough, thank you. This location right here, that's a wood grinding place. They use exactly the same type of grinder that we're proposing using. They have no pit, so you can see it directly from the road. The houses that are right over here are almost exactly the distance between the housing project here in the Cherry Creek area and this site, almost exactly the same distance. I don't know why this person doesn't have a permit. Maybe a permit's not required at all. But this person apparently doesn't have a permit, but I can show you from the photos that... I'm sorry, next one. There's the operation from the gate. We've got a little bit closer view. Those are his... Well, that's actually the quarry looking back the other way. I can show you from the Google elevation.
Nope, you're right.
Oh, I'm sorry. That is... Right, actually, that looks back toward Ellis. That's one of the delivery trucks, and those are piles of wood grindings right there. So, you have exactly the same use in this facility, less than a mile and a half away, nearly exactly the same distance from housing that you have now. I think it's interesting that, you know, we're required, of course... I got into this very late, and so I'm learning a bit here as I go. I didn't look to see if there was a special use permit even required for this site. I'm a little concerned that maybe there's not, or we have somebody that's not in compliance. But regardless of that, if you would've had any objections, any complaints, any noise issues, any dust issues, any traffic issues, you'd think that somebody would've already addressed that with this gentleman.
There's one other option that's grandfathered in.
It's only been operating for about a year, so I don't think it's been grandfathered. But we... I think that's just one thing that we need to sort of check on before we talk about, you know, odor and noise and dust and those sorts of things. So, I think that that operation tells you that maybe we don't have the concerns that this city seems to be concerned about. And I think another thing that we need to talk about a little bit is when we had the significant tree fall issue up here several... A couple of years ago, the city had a tremendous amount of waste that they needed to get rid of. And the city then contracted with a company, a contractor, to grind and haul the material. And the material then was hauled off-site, and then was screened and ground more, and hauled off-site to Poet, same place we would haul material. And that site was the site we're proposing. Exact same site. So, about a year ago, the city contractor did precisely what we're expecting... We're asking to do today. And I don't think there were any questions, any complaints about noise or dust or vibration or odors or anything like that. I do understand that the contractor that was doing this work for the city did have a problem because they didn't know what they were doing when they stored the product, and so they pushed the product up in big piles and compacted it, which caused fermentation and heat underneath. And so, there were some fire and smoke issues out there, and ultimately, it had to be... Had to have some 24-hour tending and things like that. So, we know what we're doing. They didn't. And our piles will only be there for a very short time, as opposed to long-term storage like it was before. So, I think if you look at the history of this location, if you look at the history of the guy a mile and a half away, and if you look at the other uses in the area, I mean, you can look, all those white spots, those are active quarries. And this particular one down here... Becca, can you move that down just for me a little bit? There we go, perfect. So, we're up over here, and... Which is about three-eighths of a mile, really. I mean, if you're looking, that's a little bit below the quarter line, so that'd be a quarter of a mile from here to here. So, you're a little bit over that. But if you look at the gravel pit that's right here, quarry, that's, you know, that's about an eighth of a mile or a little more, maybe. So, you've got a lot of uses around here. I don't know if anybody... If you folks have ever been around quarries or rock salvage operations like this, but you want to talk about noise and vibrations and dust and hauling and those sorts of things, you're gonna get a lot more noise and those sorts of things off of an operation like that than you are out of our operation that's in a pit that you can't even see from the road. So, we think it's a good site. We want to also let you know, as far as odor, we've had comments about odor before, but it's always been, gee, when you grind that cedar or you grind that pine, it really smells good. There's no rotting wood or anything like that that you have to worry about. If we grind trees and things like that, you can imagine that's not gonna be an issue. And the other thing we grind are pallets, dimensional wood pieces, or if somebody goes in and demolishes a site or something, has wood product, we take that and grind it. But there's just no chance for any odor. And I'm gonna show you what the air looks like when we're grinding. I noticed that one of the concerns also was due to the prevailing north winds. Well, most of our work is done in the spring or summertime, because that's when most of the construction is done, and that's when most of the tree trimming is done. If you have a circumstance like a spring storm with lots of ice and things like that, you might be hauling at that time. But we, again, we probably wouldn't be grinding until a little bit later. And we don't have a lot of north prevailing winds during the times when we're gonna be doing most of our work. So, I think... I think that kind of cuts or takes most of my presentation to you folks. I'd be happy to answer some questions, but I want to just show you one thing, a couple of things, actually, I'm sorry. Back to my pictures here. The city also has a current operation. And blow that up a little bit. The city of Sioux Falls also has a grinding operation of its own now, where they take material, just like we do, and they have their own grinder, which operates out of the city landfill. And you can see from this picture here, landfill is... The landfill is in this area. The grinding operation is right about here, and moves occasionally to a little site closer to the north and east, I believe. And if you look right here, I believe there's a home site. And if you go here, there's another. And actually, if you look to the north and east, you can see that there's a large development here, right there, and there's a line of homes that go right down this area here, too. So, even where the city grinds, there's very... There's close proximity to other residential locations that are on the north prevailing winds also. So, I assume that the city hasn't had any complaints from those folks. And if they have, I would think that you would've seen it in your report. So, I think that not only the way that we operate, but the way that the city operates, this is a compatible use for this particular area. Let me show you just quickly what our operation looks like. Oh, that's the video. Hang on a second there. How many of you folks went to SDSU? Okay, you recognize campus? We were up on campus at SDSU. They're building some new dorms. This is a few years ago. And they asked us to come up and grind some of the trees. This is actually our grinding operation in operation. So, we're just feeding trees into this hopper, pulls it into the grinder. This is actually grinding right now and putting product out into a pile. We didn't get any complaints from the SDSU faculty or staff or folks that were there during this time. You can see there's no dust to speak of. And... Another photo. The thing is actually operating. You can see that the product is coming out the top. It can give you an idea of the dust that's being generated. Oops. Did I get cut off? Uh-oh. I was just gonna show you my video.
I think they picked you out.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
While we wait, maybe I have a couple of questions.
Sure, absolutely. I'll do my best.
Counsel, you said that your current site in Lincoln County at the T-exit, have you had... Is there a sunset clause on that operation, do you know, this use permit?
I don't believe there is a use permit for it. It's not required. We have a lease, currently a lease that's just a year-to-year lease. We've... Actually, I've been working on trying to get a longer-term lease there. That's just a concern that we want to make sure we've got a plan in effect. If we can't continue with the lease, our intention is to continue with the lease. We'd like to have a five-year lease on that property, actually, so. And that's just about two miles south of our home operation.
Chairman?
Yes?
Follow. And then, any complaints or issues on that, around that facility that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
The only complaint I would have on that, there's zero screening at that site, where they're talking about being down the pit here. I mean, you can see it from the interstate. It looks nasty, actually, but that's a different situation.
One last question on that. And so, you led into where I was going. Is there a risk to your T-site operations from a lease perspective where all these operations would be moved up to this site?
That's certainly not our intention, and I'm currently working with the attorney for the landowner, hoping we can either buy or have a longer-term lease on our current facility. We'd rather be closer to home, really. This was just a good place that had a history of similar operations that was very convenient for a lot of our customers, including all of your folks, all your contingencies.
Grind about eight times a year, you said there?
Maximum, at the one site, about eight times a year, yeah.
Thank you.
Back to that number of times. That would only be if you lost your T-site, right, that you'd be grinding eight times a year?
No, that... We grind about eight times a year, and each of those times is about seven days total in our whole operation.
Okay, so you... I guess, the question I just asked was, how many times... The question I'll ask then is, is how many times do you plan on grinding at this site?
We're expecting to do about 25% of our grind up here, so it'll be about two weeks, or two times at seven days. And I don't want to say weeks, because I think it's seven workdays is what I was kind of led to believe, including, you know, tear-down and... It takes about a day to get things moved up there, set it up, get it ready to operate, and about the same to tear it down.
So, the eight times would be if you lost your T-site, then everything would be moved here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we certainly don't anticipate doing that, and that wouldn't be, you know, certainly wouldn't be our preference either.
You want to show your video?
I've got one question, quick question for you. With the material that's being hauled in there, has there ever been a rodent problem? Because I could just see this being a rat haven.
Rodents? No, and, you know, they don't come in with the product because it's either dry wood, typically pallets. We grind a fair amount of pallets because... And we pick those up on a regular basis from different sites in town, or they bring them to us, from construction sites or manufacturers, that sort of thing. The trees and things, they typically get knocked down, and we... That's why we call it wet wood. We actually take green wood and bring them to the site, or it's brought to the site for us. And then, the, you know, the process is, when we get enough, we grind. I can't imagine that there... Have we ever had any kind of rodent issues at all?
We have a deer problem.
That would something... We'd be... If that was an issue, we would certainly address it.
Yeah, because...
I don't think we've just ever had that issue.
I'm close to an abandoned gravel pit, and they came in overnight, and that was a big concern.
Okay. Of course, you've got... Of course, you've got active pits all over, I mean, it's abandoned right now, and, you know, I think that before, when there was, the site was used as a, basically a storage and then subsequent processing site, I don't know that they had any issues like that, but we just wouldn't permit it.
Thank you.
Ready for the video here? All right, let me see if I can get it going now. It's very short. Sound?
I don't know why it's so choppy.
It's a little choppy, but you can see it.
I can, I can add the sound for you if you'd like. Vr, vr, vr.
I think we got the idea.
It's, it's far, I've been around, I've actually been around this grinder and-
Charge your client extra for that.
Yeah, absolutely. This, I charge extra for it. I've actually been around that grinder a number of times, and I've been around rock crushers a lot. And this pales in comparison to a rock crusher. I mean, it's a, in terms of vibration and dust and noise, rock crushers are, it's just a whole nother, I do some work for KPI in Yankton also, and they've got rock crushers, and that's a different deal, so.
Not gonna come up, Kevin?
All right. Well, you got the, you could actually look at it and see that, you know, here, there's the, that's it, we're actually grinding trees like we would be up there, and that's what you get. That's the dust you get. If you do dry wood, it, it's a little bit more, but again, negligible, so.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
We'll have anyone else in the audience who'd like to address this issue, please come forward, state your name and address.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wanted to address this?
Mr. Chair, if I could ask the staff a question, do you guys have a list on this one of conditions that you want, if approved?
Is just a list in case of approval, or if you're leaning that way?
Please, Kevin, so everyone knows what they are.
Sure. One, the property owner shall adhere to the site plan and site plan narrative. Two, the process of grinding wood shall take place during the hours of 8:00 a.m. through 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. Number three, any structures, including the guard shack, must be placed, located on the high portion of the ridge and not within the former gravel pit. Number four, a building permit must be obtained for the guard shack. Number five, only clean, untreated, unpainted, unstained wood shall be accepted for processing, no other materials shall be accepted. Number six, no storage of wood products will be allowed in the flood plain. Other development in the flood plain will require flood plain development permit. And number seven, an operation, it will be allowed to operate under the conditions of this permit until April 30th, 2021. Businesses, owners will be required to obtain other conditional use permits before the date if they wish to continue operation in this location. That was the sunset clause. And then, number eight, that the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the property at any time after proper notice of the owner, to ensure the property is in full compliance to the conditional use permit conditions and approval of Minnehaw County zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so if there's no other comments, we'll close the floor at this time, and look for discussion.
May I respond to the?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes.
We're going to have a, we anticipate having a portable shed. I don't think you need a building permit for that, but that wouldn't be a huge thing for us. Other than that, we have no objection to any of those conditions.
It's larger than 120 square feet, you're obligated to get a building permit.
Okay, thank you.
And I have, go ahead. I have a question. You're gonna-
All right, I shouldn't have come back up.
Well, it's a very simple one, and it relates to the guard shack. You're going to have someone there so that, me, I got a pickup load of rubbish, trees, but you're gonna have, that guard will be able to look at my pickup, and when I bring it out and say, uh-uh, you got a bunch of grass in here that we can't grind, you've got small brush, things like that. The reason I'm asking that question is, is that's what I could see as being the problem stuff.
The landfill alternative.
It's the landfill alternative.
And that's a great point, and we, we do that now, we will do it in the future, and you'd be surprised, it's a, we talked about that, they said it's about one roll-off a year that we end up having to kind of separate back out and haul out from the product. The other thing I might mention is, we don't grind on windy days, because if anything does blow off, that's our product, and that's our fuel that we sell. So we don't want our product going elsewhere, that's money to us, so. Okay?
Yes, Bill? Do you have a question, or?
Well, it's a question related, there's nothing about lighting on here, so I guess I have a question related to lighting.
That's a good point, because there used to be a big nasty light shining right at the housing development out in those gravel pits for a while.
Lighting? No lighting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve with the conditions that staff outlined. Second. Okay, we have a motion, and a second to approve with these conditions as stated before you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just say to Steve over there that the other gravel pits have exactly the same problem, where a few dozen tires show up on Monday morning or whatever. And so they're on the lookout for that stuff, as is the single resident on that street.
And that's why I asked the question, this wasn't as a deterrent, just to make sure that everybody understood that there's going to be someone at that guard shack. That's why I asked the question.
Do you have a discussion on the county side? So, Mr. Chairman, I think in this situation, because of the existing operation of the heavy rock crushing and gravel pits and everything in that area, the existing heavy truck traffic and the use that's, that's operating there, that appears to be able to continue into the foreseeable future, this use down inside of an existing pit doesn't appear to be that big of a, that big of an issue, therefore, I can support it. Discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion with the condition set forth, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries on the county side.
On the city side, need a motion and a second?
Make a motion for approval. With that list of stipulations.
I'll second. Any discussions on the city side?
Oh, I think there might be plenty of discussion with the staff recommending us not to approve it. I don't know why, but it has a feel-good feeling to me, as far as taking care of wood and lumber and such like that. I wish we could have some clarification about this operation that apparently is doing the same thing, just roughly, sounded like about a half-mile away. I think, I guess I'd be curious to know if that's being done legally, or if that's just being done on the side. I don't know, if I didn't approve it, it'd be for that reason, but I think if I didn't voted not to prove it, I think they'd stand a good chance to take it to the council for county and city. Maybe they'd have a clarification for it at that time, as far as the operation down the road. I don't know what anybody else might feel.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. I agree with a lot of what you said, Kenny. It is a struggle with staff recommending denial. However, I'll say the, I think the gravel pit that's, currently separates the houses from this processing facility would be a bigger, or is a bigger impact than this would be, so I think I'm gonna support it.
Anything else from staff, or from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I will say, I know this development, even looked there personally, from my own home site, but I think a lot of the rock quarries, even in Ellis, that operation there with, you know, pet food manufacturer, that was already there. And I don't know if I'm all warm and fuzzy, even though you control it with the wind, you control it, it's gonna have a better, I love the smell of fresh-cut cedar, it's awesome, but, all that being said, I'm not convinced that continuing to increase this kind of activity in that area is the best, the best cause.
Okay, any other discussion? With that, all in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Yes.
Hmm. Hate this when this happens.
You gotta vote now.
Yep, I have to vote, and I'm gonna vote yes, for approval.
All right, I believe that concludes our joint city-county business, so we'll let them dismiss. We'll take a five-minute brief restroom break, get a drink of water.
Run over to Wiley's for a minute.
Do a journey, he'll need the restroom.
All the five-minute meetings we've had.
I'll order on the internet, and- There you go.
Hate that one.